Good evening, welcome to the Planning Commission for Wheat Ridge, May fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen. We have a roll call of the members.
Anne Brinkman.
Present.
Ellen Bucknam.
Present.
Steve Timms, absent.
Emery Dorsey.
Present.
Thank you. Scott Ohm.
Here.
Amanda Weaver, absent. Silka Pop.
Here.
Thank you.
May we have a pledge of allegiance?
Do we have a flag?
There's one right here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have approval of the order of tonight's agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the order of the agenda.
Second.
Any comment? Please vote.
Motion approved, five to zero.
Thank you. May I have approval of the minutes of April seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen?
I move to approve the minutes.
Any comments, any changes? Okay, please vote.
Motion approved, four to zero, with one abstention, Anne Brinkman.
Thank you. Now is the time for the public forum. We don't have anybody in the audience, but I just have to read this out. This is the time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on the agenda. So, all those in the audience, you can come down here and speak to any issues, anytime. So, we don't have anybody here, so we will move on to the public hearing. Case number WZ one-four-zero-four, an application filed by Rocky Mountain Biosystems, Inc., for amendment to the Youngfield Plaza Planned Commercial Development Outline Development Plan to allow additional uses at thirty-nine twenty-four through four-zero-nine-six Youngfield Thank you.
Great. Good evening, Commissioners. Meredith Record, representing the Wheat Ridge Community Development Department, and I am here to present case number WZ fourteen dash oh-four, which is a request for approval of an amendment to an outline development plan, planned commercial development. Property address is four-zero-nine-six Youngfield Street, and that runs through thirty-nine twenty-four Youngfield. Forty-ninety-six is the address of the entire planned development, and the particular tenant space we're talking about is at thirty-nine twenty-four. Property is on planned commercial development, and the comprehensive plan designates the property as mixed-use commercial, primary commercial corridor. I'd like to enter into the record the comprehensive plan, zoning ordinance, case file and packet materials, and the contents of this digital presentation.
Accepted.
Thank you. The property is within the city of Wheat Ridge, and all proper posting and notification requirements have been met. Therefore, there is jurisdiction here, this case. And, just a little bit of housekeeping, a modification to a planned development, outlined development plan is processed as a zone change, and because of that, Planning Commission will be making a recommendation to City Council, which is the final authority. So, moving on with the staff presentation. This image is the property which is outlined in red, and I'm going to go ahead and make a disclaimer right off the bat, that the Jefferson County parcel lines really don't follow our GIS system, which is why it looks like the property is cut off on the bottom. But this building is located within the subject planned development as well. So, this is the two thousand and twelve image of the property. Again, it's located along Youngfield, and the address we're giving for the site is thirty-nine twenty-four through forty-ninety-six Youngfield. It has about nine point seven acres in size, and has two structures, as you can see on the overhead. North in this graphic is to the top, and we've got Youngfield, which runs along the western property line with I seventy beyond that. Let's see, we've got about sixty-four thousand square feet of space, and within the development and the existing laboratory operation does occupy three of the units in the eastern building. And, let's see, what else going on? This is the same image, but with the city's zoning map superimposed on it. The property which is designated in gray and outlined in red does have planned commercial development zoning. Surrounding zonings include, to the east, the Clear Creek Green Belt area, which is zoned A-one. To the north are other properties within the same general planned development. To the west, we have I seventy further beyond that. We have planned commercial zoning with the Clear Creek Crossing Development approved for that several years ago. And then further to the south, up on the bluff, you can see this yellow area, and here are generally low-density, single-family neighborhoods. So, the property was platted in nineteen eighty. This is a copy of the subdivision plat. The subject property we're looking at tonight is the southernmost lot within that property, also known as Lot One. And I would note that this was the first of the three, the four properties to be developed. The other three properties within that original subdivision are all used for RV sales and This is a copy of the planned development document for the property. Subsequent to the plating, there was an development, outline development plan approved for the entire eighteen acres, which includes the subject site and then the three lots to the north. And, uses were generally industrial in nature, and also allowed business offices, service establishment, banks, also manufacturing, processing, and assembly. And, while the laboratory use is generally included within that processing sort of umbrella, there were not any marijuana-related uses to occur in the development, which is why we're going through an amendment tonight. And, the applicant is proposing the amendment to the allowed uses within the outline development plan for the research and testing of marijuana products. Again, the applicant has been located within the planned development for, I believe, eight years, and they currently conduct research and development of medical devices and technology, and they want to expand their services to include marijuana testing and research. Of the four lots within the planned development, this would be the only piece of it that would allow the marijuana uses. So, just a couple slides of the area. This picture is taken standing out on Youngfield, looking to the east. This is at the northern entrance drive into the development. You can see over on the right-hand side of the image, the Youngfield Plaza sign. This is generally the view from Youngfield Street, and this is the southern access point into the development. This is actually located right across from the underpass for West Fortieth Avenue under I seventy. So, just to give you a little bit of a primer on where we are with marijuana in the state of Colorado and in the city of Wheat Ridge. As hopefully most of you recall, the Colorado voters did approve the medical use of marijuana in two thousand, and by two thousand and nine, we started to see dispensaries appearing as alternative medical shops. The first one Wheat Ridge had opened was in two thousand and nine. It was located on Wadsworth Boulevard. It's currently no longer there. In two thousand and ten, the state legislature adopted statutes to regulate medical marijuana. And in two thousand and twelve, the voters of the state then approved the recreational use of marijuana. The City Council adopted an ordinance last fall, which allowed regulation of retail marijuana, retail, what we call MIPS, which stands for medically infused, or marijuana-infused products and testing facilities. That was in October of two thousand and thirteen. And then, just recently, in April, City Council approved a moratorium on new MJ testing locations and MIPS, and because this particular case was already in process, they are exempt from the moratorium. And, in July this year, mandatory testing of marijuana products will be required by the state. So, a couple other facts about marijuana in the city of Wheat Ridge is, we do allow retail and medical marijuana centers to be located in our C-one and IE zones. Those marijuana uses include grow operations and then the marijuana-infused products. The direct sales tax revenue from both medical and, or excuse me, just medical marijuana in two thousand and nine was about eight thousand dollars to the city. In two thousand and thirteen, the revenues from both retail and medical were up to over eighty-seven thousand dollars for that year. The city currently has five dispensaries, which include both medical centers and retail centers. We have four grow operations, and currently three MIPS, again, which are marijuana-infused products, and two applications pending, which one of these applications is what we're hearing tonight for the testing center. So, as far as the process goes, we handle an amendment to a planned development, outline development plan similar to a zone change process. So, once the applicant meets with us in pre-application meeting, the next thing they do is hold a neighborhood meeting. There was a meeting held at the end of March in two thousand and fourteen, and we did have no attendees present from the neighborhood or the surrounding area. We went through our typical referral process, which includes, including all of the city agencies and external service agencies with their input as far as how they could handle the request. All of the agencies responding, which included the Fire District, the Public Works Department, and also the Police Department, came, indicated there were no concerns with the proposed addition of the marijuana testing and research. And, I would note that there would be no proposed changes to the property at this time. So, again, because we have to process this particular kind of request similar to a zone change, we are obligated to go through the criteria we use to evaluate a zone change request, and staff has made the following recommendations, which are more detailed in your staff report. First of all, we've concluded that all utilities and infrastructure are already in place. We've concluded that the amendment to the outline development plan slash final development plan is supported by envisioned Wheat Ridge, the city's comprehensive plan, for increasing the tax base and creating new jobs. We've concluded that there should be a positive economic impact to the city if the amendment is approved, and that the additional use will fulfill a need at the state level for the required testing, which again starts in July of two thousand and fourteen. And finally, that the evaluation criteria for approval of this request, we did include two conditions, and that those are that the marijuana testing and research be allowed only on Lot One of Youngfield Plaza, not extended to Lots Two, Three, and Four, and that, of course, all appropriate state and city requirements be met by the facility. So, that concludes staff comments. I would be happy to answer questions.
So, I'm going to start with my, to my right, Scott. Did you have any questions?
Thank you. The first thing is, I just want to, it looks like there's a discrepancy. It says the neighborhood meeting in the packet is October fourteenth, two thousand and ten, and on your slide it says March.
That's a typographical error. Thank you for pointing that out.
And then, generally, not specifically, but generally, what, which properties were notified? Just kind of areas?
Our notification requirement is a six, or excuse me, a three-hundred-foot radius around the property. Because you've got the large expanse of Green Belt on the east side, it would have encompassed, usually encompasses about a block or so around the perimeter of the property. So, it would have included the adjacent businesses to the north, and then also some of the homes on the bluff to the south.
Okay. Are there any setbacks from schools?
Not for testing facilities.
And then, has the Fire Department has reviewed the information and doesn't have any recommendations?
No, they specifically responded back that they had no concerns about the additional testing.
I think that's, that's all the questions I have. I have some other questions for the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have no questions.
Thank you. Emery?
The, the building, the base is east.
Yes.
That is where the, one of those units there is where the testing facility would be. It'll be adjacent to Rocky Mountain Biosystems.
Right. They currently have, they currently have tenant space that they will keep as part of their, they're not even expanding space, so it's just expanding uses.
Right. The other thing, when we look at forty-ninety-six through thirty-nine twenty-four, as far as an address, that's this whole complex, right?
It is the whole complex.
Okay. Not just that one unit.
Correct.
Or, that side. It's the front side, the backside, all sides.
So, if there were the need or the space available, which we believe that they, this particular planned development is totally full up with tenant space. If there were an opening at some point, there could be another testing facility that could go in.
Okay. That's, that clarifies what I wanted. Thank you.
Ellen?
Hi, Meredith.
Yeah, Ellen.
So, I note that you mentioned police has no concerns. Is there, maybe the applicant might be a better person to ask, but I'll ask you first. Is there a protocol for secure transport of samples to testing facilities?
Well, all of the testing facilities would have to follow the state requirements, and the applicant would be better posed to answer the question about the transport.
Okay. That's all I have. Thanks.
And then, I have just a couple questions. So, are you aware, I'll ask you and then the applicant, are there different levels of testing facilities? Different capabilities? So, Level A, Level B, Level C type facilities?
I don't know.
Okay, okay. Oh. And then, you, I'll ask the applicant too, but I'll just ask you, is this type of business, is the revenue from it allowed to go into banks? Is the revenue, can it be deposited into banks unlike actual dispensaries?
You know, I'm not sure of that question either. I know that's being looked at.
Okay.
But, that would be at the state level, not at the municipal level.
The only reason I ask is because of the police presence.
Right.
And, so, okay. I'll ask the applicant when they come up. But, anybody have any follow-on questions? Thank you. So now, the applicant has the opportunity to come up. Do me a favor. When you come up, say your name and address. Spell your last name, for Kim. And then, you're welcome to do your own presentation, or you can just answer questions, or a hybrid of both. So, whatever works. And you can lift that up, so you don't have to, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, and commission members. I appreciate you giving me the time to speak for a few minutes. I would like to, oh, Kevin Marchito, M-A-R-C-H-I-T-T-O, one-five-four-zero-three, West Fifty-first Place in Golden.
Thank you.
I would like to just spend a few minutes kind of going over what we actually do at Rocky Mountain Biosystems, and just so you're a little bit familiar with our history and our, what the company does. I'm the president, CEO, and founder of Rocky Mountain Biosystems. We've been in business there at the Wheat Ridge location for about eight years. The company has been in existence for about twelve years. We focused over the years on different aspects of medical technology, vaccine delivery, delivery of pain medications through the skin. We've developed technologies. We actually hold thirty patents. We've applied for about seventy-five, many are pending, all coming out of mine and my partner's heads. So, we also have worked on things like a treatment for incontinence. We believe we actually have a means to cure the problem of incontinence in perhaps up to fifty million Americans. We've solved problems for adhesives, medical adhesives, where they're not very effective nowadays. We've been, we've actually secured four million dollars in NIH grants over the years, and with comments from the NIH that these adhesives could actually replace sutures and staples and improve patient outcome. So, we've done, have a long history of medical research and successful medical research with a high level of credibility. Our interests right now are, include research and testing of marijuana and cannabis-related substances. The interest in research stems from our interest in compounds such as cannabidiol, which is a component of marijuana and industrial hemp. Perhaps you've seen the news recently, several hundred families have moved to Colorado so they can access CBD for their children who have had severe epileptic seizures. This actually is a groundbreaking treatment for epileptic seizures, where kids will normally can die by the time they're six or seven years old, because they have forty severe seizures a day, and CBD knocks it down to one or two seizures. So, it's a lifesaver for these kids. CBD is not a psychoactive component of cannabis. So, we've, and through some of our connections, we've been able to obtain industrial hemp from Germany, which is a legal, it is legal to import the material from Germany and develop and isolate CBD. So, we have some ongoing research in the area. It's also known to be an anti-anxiety agent, and also work on other aspects of mental health, and may, some people think it represents a cure for severe autism, for example. There's a whole myriad of things. Problem with research around marijuana and cannabis is that really, a lot of it is anecdotal. You can read a lot of things in the news and hear a lot of information about, it cures cancer, it does this and that. Part of our intent is to really bring some credibility to the research and show what is real and what is, and separate that from what is not. The compliance testing is critical in this, because we think there's some real benefits, real true medical benefits to marijuana and some of its constituents and some of its components. And those, those really need to be researched, and so the regulatory thing adds credibility to the whole industry. We've got problems today with things like extracting materials using solvents that could be explosive, and you may have seen the news where houses have blown up. We've got problems with potency, where people are eating cannabis or marijuana-infused products and not knowing the potency, or maybe they get into the hands of children. And so, so it's, if done properly, it should be very safe. But, these, the companies that are making these products, the people that use the products, they're doing a lot of this perhaps unknowingly, and so the regulations are critical, regulating and regulations by, for testing. So, testing for potency, testing for residual contaminants and solvents, testing for microbial contaminants and so forth down the line. These are all things that we do in our laboratory anyway, and so, to, for other, for other materials. So, to open it up to do cannabis testing is not a big leap for us. Regulations and compliance, compliance is something that we follow all the time. We recently won FDA approval for a product, and we've had to follow very strict regimens in terms of regulatory compliance, according to the FDA regulations. Good clinical practices, good laboratory practices, international standards that dictate what level of testing and safety and standard, and the standard of testing that you have to perform at, this is something that we do regularly. In marijuana testing, this is a new area for the state and for the whole country, in fact, and so that amount, the regulations, the compliance necessary to get it to that standard where everything is very controlled, is sort of a black box right now. There are some testing companies, they have varying levels of the, of ability to have a quality assurance program that would operate at a high level of standard. Part of our intent is to set the standard for that type of testing, and the bar should be pretty high. We want everything to be done properly, so there's a high degree of credibility. We actually have years and years of experience of doing that, and that's part of what we intend to do. We believe by setting the standard and doing some high-quality testing that we can actually, in Wheat Ridge, become a state-of-the-art facility and set, perhaps set the standard for the country, and the state, of course, initially. So, our laboratory is a multimillion-dollar facility. We've invested a lot into equipment, state-of-the-art equipment, for chemical analyses, for developing medical devices, for researching pharmaceuticals. We've been using radiation, under radiation approved by the Radiation Control Board in Colorado. We have DEA license to research compounds like morphine and fentanyl, which are narcotics, class-two narcotics, Schedule II, excuse me. And also, we house small animals and have a laboratory animal welfare license, this is issued by the federal government. So, we're very, you know, it's a serious endeavor. So, we absolutely meet the requirements for this type of operation. Let me give you an idea of what exactly we'll be doing. So, to answer, and to answer some of the questions about transport, for example, we will have a courier, okay? We don't intend to have people coming to the shop from the outside. We prefer to keep a low profile, as we always have, just because of the type of research we do. We just don't, we don't need any attention for that. So, a courier will go out and pick up the sample. Those couriers are bonded, those couriers are registered, they would have occupational licenses from the state, and so there's a criminal background check and everything, as with all the rest of our employees. They would bring the material to the, to the company. The company, the receptionist would then check it in and begin to, and document, assign a number, a barcode, that would go into a system and be registered. The material is then secured, locked away in a, in an area where no one can access it. The entire facility has, is under tight security. At this point, it actually, we actually do have a high level of security with alarms and cameras and so forth. The cameras, the alarms, the restricted areas are, which we already have, are requirement for the state, the state Colorado regulations as per the state law. So, the next step is, as somebody's going to perform testing, to check out some material, document carefully, weigh how much they're using, or take a measurement of how much they're going to use, how much remains, go and do the testing, acquire the results for the testing, prepare a report, and that would be delivered by email or by regular mail. Any waste materials that are left over, those are carefully disposed of. There's clear regulations per Colorado's laws about how those are disposed of. Generally, you mix them with some material, dirt, or some other waste material, and then they can go into a regular landfill or be placed in regular. and then they can go into a regular landfill or, um, be placed in regular, uh, garbage. But they're, at that point, they're unsuitable for use. So, um, that's, uh, pretty much the, the way the operation would go. So, um, I hope that gives you a, a good idea of the, um, how we intend to operate.
So this time, I'll start on my left. So Alan.
Uh, no additional questions. Thanks for the additional information.
Emery.
In reading over, uh, your, uh, history or your, your planned use, you are stating that the building that you're going to lease there will be solely for that, the use for the cannabis, it won't infiltrate into the rest of your, uh, facility? Is that the way I understood it?
That's correct. We currently have three units, and our plan is to, uh, restrict access to one of the units, um, to just the, uh, the, uh, this, this company's activities. So, um, none of the material would, uh, go into the other areas, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Silky?
I don't have any questions.
And Scott.
Thank you. I have some questions. Um, could you explain the, are you doing any extraction or using any solvents, and if what, if solvents, what type of solvents?
I'm sorry, I-
What, are, are you extracting any materials at the site or using any solvents?
Um, I, I, and I think I understand the cause for your concern, um, because, uh, it, it, the answer is technically yes, but we do not extract for, uh, preparation or, or to, uh, for retail purposes. So, the amounts that we extract are, uh, gram amounts, just a, a small, like a thimbleful, if you will. Um, so technically, we are extracting. That's, that's a requirement in order to do the testing. But our extracting is very different than commercial extracting to prepare a product. We have fume hoods, we have, uh, which are, you know, vacuum hoods with safety glass, and, um, you know, we, we, we have a means to handle, uh, you know, flammable materials and so forth, and so we, we actually do this for a lot of our other technologies as well.
Um, do you use CO2 as a solvent, or?
Um, we do not currently. What, um, though it's, it's, there's a reasonable chance we would do some research on, on, um, extractions and use CO2. Um, the reason being because right now, and, and I think you probably are aware of what's going on, the, the problems with, commonly they extract with butane, and butane is, of course, explosive. It's lighter fluid. It boils at room temperature, uh, any kind of a spark or even excess heat could cause an explosion. So it's very dangerous, and, and, uh, you know, it's a big step going from what you would see in a cigarette lighter to a, to a gallon jug of, of material, so you can imagine the explosive nature. A lot of people have gone to the, now, now, CO2 extraction is, is quite a bit more difficult because you have to have compressed gas and, and, uh, and control the temperature very carefully. But with CO2 extraction, you removed the risk of contempt, of, uh, explosion, it removed the risk of, uh, of, of, uh, potentially toxic contaminants and so on, so it's a preferential, uh, extraction procedure. For that reason, we're interested in CO2 and, and will, will, uh, would like to do some research on a small scale of, of, uh, preparing safe means, uh, for consumers to do that. I mean, right now, it's illegal. Um, there's no way for people at home, say, to do something like that, uh, you know, without buying cans of butane. It's, it's, uh, very dangerous, and so, uh, but CO2 is considered safe.
I, I think what I'm more curious about, and I know Ms. Ricker said that one of conditions is complying with state laws, is the Colorado revised statute 12 dash 43 dot 3 dash 202 that specifically talks about the, uh, medical marijuana concentration, um, requirements for CO2, uh, because CO2 has it, you have to have certain, uh, it has to be in an enclosed room, there has to be all these different, um, uh, certifications that go through that in order to have that done, because the, the CO2 is, is dangerous if it was, if it's in an enclosed room, obviously. That's what we exhale, but, um, I just want, that's, that's the only thing, that's my concern, is I just want to make sure that, that you, you're aware of it and, and, uh, you're okay with that condition for compliance.
I assure you, we have far more dangerous things than CO2 there. But we, so we, we, we've been, uh, yeah, we, we handle a lot of, uh, risky materials, and as, as I said, um, you know, we've been doing this type of research for, for a long time. There, I've been doing it myself for about 40 years, and, uh, you know, fume hoods, uh, which, you know, vacuum the gases to the outsides, safety shields, uh, you know, we wear, uh, protective glasses and so forth, so it's very controlled.
And, and again, you're compliant with the, I guess you said all the exhaust systems, the hoods and everything?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's the only questions I really had. Um, thank you.
So I have a couple of questions. Thank you, Scott. Um, so the first question that Meredith wasn't able to, uh, completely answer, are there different levels of testing facilities?
Not, no, there are-
No, so there's one level of testing?
One, one type of testing, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So in the write-up, in the packet that we received, that the description of your company said, "The applicant is a biomedical company that conducts research and development of medical devices, surgical technologies, pharmaceuticals, and vaccines." Are you considered a compounder? So do you currently do compounding?
We do some.
Okay.
We don't, we don't have any products that require compounding, but for example, our vaccine preparations.
Right.
Um, those are, uh, so we've developed something that you can actually attach to your skin, and it treats your skin and releases a vaccine into the skin. That required a-
The compounding, okay. So, the reason I'm getting around to this is, um, while you're s- testing right now, do you anticipate, are you just staying on testing, or do you anticipate in the future the oper, the interest to do compounding?
Well, there's, there's a, a sort of a double answer.
Okay.
The, now, for us, th- this type of facility, we are not allowed to, uh, retail, uh, marijuana products at all.
Okay.
So anything we do would be on a research basis.
Okay.
So, now, um, so as far as compounding, um, there's a lot of interest, for example, in things that are convenient dose forms for some of these compounds, CBD, for example. And right now, um, most people, they take a dropper and put it into their ch- kids-
They're winging it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or, or adults, or smoking it. Well, smoking is not great. And we've have a lot of familiar, a lot of familiarization with several different compounding t- uh, technologies, one of which is dissolvable films. So you're familiar with the Listerine strips?
Yep.
That you put on your tongue and they dissolve? So we're, we can put CBD into that material.
Okay.
And so, um, so developing the technology for that and then passing it on to a real retail operation is, is of interest to us.
Okay, I get it. Okay, um, and then the other question was, are banks allowed to accept the monies, the revenue, from your testing of retail and medical marijuana?
I've already had a conversation with Wells Fargo, and they said as long as all we're doing is testing and research, they're okay with it.
Okay, so you don't, you're not going to have a warehouse full of cash, so to speak?
I, I, I hope we have that problem.
I know.
But then we'll bring it to the-
But you know what I'm saying.
So, um, yeah, Wells Fargo, in fact, they've been actively courting our business, um, since we registered the company. So, the, the new, the new company will be independent of Rocky Mountain Biosystems, and it will be called Cannabis Compliance Testing.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Um, okay, I'm done with questions. Are there any more?
I'll have one more question.
Emery?
With reference to testing, will you be testing, uh, for the state on, uh, some of the infused products that are being, uh, produced and marketed retail, or is this, is that part of it too?
Um, we'll be testing all materials. Uh, the state can designate, uh, any tester that they want and require a particular retail operation to do testing, so, um, you know, I can't assume that the state will come to us, but we, we intend to be, uh, you know, high-quality and, and go for that business as well.
Okay. So that would make a lot more, you would end up, if, if you were, uh, one of the favored with the state to test the producers of the infused products, uh, you would have more traffic with reference to bringing a lot of product in?
Well, it's, uh, again, we intend to use couriers, um, to go out and, and bring the material to us, so it, it, it won't be much traffic at all.
Because I have read, you know, in the last week and a half, uh, every day, there's something with reference to the testing of, uh, all these infused products, and that nothing seems to be in compliance at this point. Nobody knows where anything is, so.
It's, it's, uh-
It's rather-
It's a mess.
It's a mess.
It is. And, and I, and I know that there's, I believe, six companies right now, and, and three of them, uh, just are not able to, uh, do the testing with the level of regulatory compliance that we are. Uh, they may be able to put in place that system in the future, but it's, uh, it's not there now.
Okay, that sounds good.
Anne, I did have-
Please.
-one more question, um, or a question. Uh, I was just wondering, in terms of your trials, would they be conducted with, um, human participants or animals, or what, how would you be conducting those?
Um, that would be, that would be interesting to us. Um, we haven't planned any, any, any real studies with humans or animals at this point. We've got a long history of performing human and animal studies. We have two active, uh, human trials going on right now in Chicago and El Paso with a device that we've developed. Um, so when we do a clinical study, we go through what's called an internal review board. Um, these are, it's a, it's a, and there's several around the country, uh, several, uh, generally at universities, but sometimes they're independent, these, and they, and they're regulated by the National Institutes of Health, and they're defined by, uh, government standards. They review the protocol, uh, and they evaluate it, and then they determine if we're allowed to go ahead and do the study. So, um, we don't do any studies without going through IRBs, as they're called. Um, similarly, um, animal research, the way we do it, we follow, uh, national, uh, federal, uh, federal guidelines. Um, you, so our, our facility is accredited, and, um, that accreditation involves having, uh, having independent reviewers come down and inspect our facilities twice a year, and, uh, we've always passed. The protocols, the study protocols for those, as well as any human studies, have to be reviewed and approved by an outside source. We do that voluntarily because it gives, it provides credibility to the studies. Then we can publish the studies, and, and there's no question that we're, um, you know, following, uh, good laboratory practices.
You know, just because of the state of the current federal law, would the trials, potentially if they're human, would they be in Colorado? Do you have any ideas on that?
Um, we would have to do something in Colorado because of the, the, the state, because of the laws.
Okay.
And, and transport laws, so.
Okay, thank you.
On this facility, I'll ask one more time, one more thing. Uh, there is no federal guidelines on this unit that you want to build, uh, and no oversight. Who has an oversight on what you're going to be doing?
The state is, uh, putting in place accreditation, an accreditation system, a, a mechanism. Um, I don't, there, I, last time I spoke to people at the state, they were down to two parties who would come in and, uh, and it would be one selected from the two, and, uh, they will come in and review our operation, uh, provide samples for testing, no, with, you know, sort of mock samples that, uh, to show that we actually can do the testing that we propose, review our books, review our quality records, so, um, there will be some oversight. Today, the test, today, the test facilities don't have that, but it, they will very soon.
Will that be done? Uh, will, will, will the state have this in place by the time you get your facility up and running?
I believe July 1st, um, they intend to have it in place, and, and so, uh, the answer, I believe, is yes.
Okay.
Great questions. Any other? Thank you very much for answering the question.
All right, thank you very much.
So, with that, we, um, it's time for public, or, uh, it's time for public. Did you want to speak? Are you sure? It's a chance, a chance in a lifetime. Okay. Okay, just checking. Okay, um, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. And we can discuss, oh, I didn't even ask, do we have any other comments, uh, questions for staff? Good, because I already closed the public hearing. Um, uh, so, I'm open for, uh, questions, comments, or a motion? I can't make it myself. I'll do it. Okay.
I, I move to recommend approval of case number WZ dash 14 dash 04. A request for approval of an amendment to the Youngfield Plaza Plan Commercial Development Outline Development Plan for property located at 3924 through 4096 Youngfield for the following reasons. The additional uses will fulfill a statewide need and should result in an economic benefit to the city. The rezoning request is consistent with Envision Wheat Ridge, the city's comprehensive plan. The evaluation criteria support approval of this request with, with the following conditions. The additional uses of marijuana research and testing be allowed only on Lot 1 of the Youngfield Plaza Plan Development, and two, all appropriate state and city requirements be met by the proposed facility.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, before we vote, any last comments? Any questions, concerns? Please vote.
Motion approved, five to zero.
Okay. So with that, we have a couple other things on the agenda. If you guys, you're welcome to stay, you're welcome to stay, or, um, we can just go to other items? Do we have any other items?
No, we do not.
Okay. No items? Do we have a ca, do we have, are we meeting for the next?
Yes, um, we are meeting on June 5th. We do have a land use case, and, um, so.
Um, do we have a meeting possibly the fo, the following?
We, at this point, we don't have anything on the agenda. We do have a couple of land use cases that are in the hopper that could be ready, or it, are we having an issue with June, is it 19th?
Yeah, and that's why I'm about to tell you.
We, you having an issue?
Um, I just want to, I might be out of, it depends on when. Are you out of town? So hold on, doo-doo, June 5th, 19th. I am here.
Okay, but Silco, you said you're out of-
I've gone both.
You're gone both weeks?
For June 5th.
June 5th and June 19th? Anybody else need to?
Yeah, it is summer vacation time, so.
Yeah.
I'm getting married.
Oh! That's, that's more than just vacation.
Woo-hoo!
Congratulations.
Awesome.
Is the June 5th a planning meeting or a voting meeting? I just asked.
It's, I'm sorry, it's, it's a public hearing.
It's a public hearing.
Yeah, it's not a study session.
Not a study.
Yeah.
A case.
Okay, anything else?
I have one question. With the historical Brownfield bill signing today?
Yes.
Is that portion, my understanding is that portion that, uh, the, the city bought? Would that be going forward, I guess, after that?
Oh, yes.
Okay, remediation?
Yes.
Okay.
Cool. Any other questions? Okay, with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion approved, five to zero.
Thank you. Have a good night.